Alleged to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024. The time is 6:30 PM. The meeting of the Greensburg City Council is called at order. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Amy, would you please call the roll?
Jamie Kane?
Here.
Mark Carmen?
Here.
Kevin Fleetwood?
Here.
Rodney King?
Here.
Vieta McKenzie?
Here.
Daryl Polling?
Here.
Daryl Tressler?
Here.
You all should have received a copy of the minutes from the September 10th public hearing and the regular meeting. If there are no edits, additions, or corrections to those, those will stand as presented.
I did correct the date on those and put the correct one into your Dropbox. It was the correct minute, just the date at the top needed to be updated.
Any other comments? Okay, those will stand. Chief Sturmer, you've got ordinance 24-17. See Inspector Campbell's here. This is for the fines and fees for fire inspections.
Correct. I believe this is going to be considered the second reading. After consulting with those that had some concerns, we ended up removing paragraph seven, which addressed fireworks altogether. It was going to take a massive rewrite verbiage, as well as we would lose some of the blur the lines between fees and fines and fire prevention enforcement of fireworks or other type of fire incidents. So it was removed in its totality. Nothing else has changed with that document.
Kevin, I think that was a question you had brought up. Anything else? Is there a motion to approve 24-17 on second reading?
Second.
Motion's made by Kevin, second by Jamie. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Perfect.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Al. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Amy, you have a whole slew. 24-18.
24-18 is the Greensburg city budget for 2025. This is presented for second reading.
Any questions or comments on second reading?
We talked about the stipend. I guess it's in the budget, but it's going to be more the salary ordinance.
24-21.
Official salary ordinance. Okay.
This is for the overall budget.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made by Daryl, second by Jamie. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? 24-9. Oh, I'm sorry. We should probably do roll call votes on the final budget reading. That was advised. So Amy, can you please call the roll for 24-18?
Sure. Kevin?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl Polling?
Yes.
Daryl Tressler?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Mark Carmen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. 24-19 is the Greensburg Community Schools budget. This is second and final reading. Superintendent Hunter is here. If you do have any questions for him?
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Rodney. Amy, would you please call the roll?
Kevin?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl Polling?
Yes.
Daryl Tressler?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
24-20 is the salary ordinance for city employees.
Make a motion to approve on second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Kevin. Amy, would you please call the roll?
Kevin? Rodney?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl Polling?
Yes.
Daryl Tressler?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
24-21's the elected official salary for 2025.
There was some discussion about the stipend for the mayor's salary in here. I guess what I'd like to make a motion that we amend that stipend to half the amount that was on last month's approval. So just cut it in half.
Your motion?
That's my motion, to approve with that amendment.
On second.
Anything else?
I'd like to speak to that. My vote in this situation is not for Josh Marsh. My vote is for the position of the mayor of Greensburg, whomever that person might be. I think it's imperative that we look at our history, what we've done financially. I've talked with a number of people since our last meeting and explained to them what my feelings are in regards to the salary for that position. We are fortunate enough to have a person finishing up the fifth year, and the truth of the matter is, he could leave tomorrow, and we have to find someone to take that position. And the people I talked with, they said that would be a good position, and I feel like I'm qualified to do it. But if I'm making a liberal movement, I can't take the cut and pay. If I retire, I don't want a job that's seven days a week, 24 hours a day, one call 24 hours, and attending the number of meetings that that position calls for. And I think it's imperative that we look at the whole situation and realize what we are expecting from the person in that position, and what we are willing to pay them in regards to our needs. Thank you.
Any other comments on this? A motion has been made and already seconded by Kevin.
I will just kind of echo what Dr. King says in that this is not a vote, my vote is not a vote against the person in Mayor Josh Marsh. It is for the position. Rodney and I don't agree on that. I too have talked to a lot of people, and I'm getting a lot of negative, that we were jumping too far, that we were biting too much off and getting a raise of that much in one time. And I just feel, speaking to the taxpayer, that I won't be able to support this.
Anything else? Amy, please call the roll.
Kevin?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl Polling?
No.
Daryl Tressler?
Yes.
Vieta?
No.
And Mark?
No.
Ordinance 2024-22 is for the employees of the utility divisions.
Make a motion we pass on the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made by Jamie, second by Kevin. Amy, please call the roll.
Kevin?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Daryl Polling?
Yes.
Daryl Tressler?
Yes.
Vieta?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
On behalf of all of our employees, staff, teammates, thank you for working through the budget process this year. Our department leadership puts a lot of effort and time into working through presenting that, working with their teams, and your support of that is greatly appreciated. Okay, we will now move to new business. Brian Robbins, the EDC director, is with us this evening, but he has asked that we table resolution 24-12. There was some additional information that may make this a moot point, and would ask that we just table it, and we can come back to it, should it be necessary, at a later date.
24-10?
Yep. It's resolution 24-10.
I'll make a motion we table.
Motion's been made by Jamie, seconded by Kevin. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Julie, you moved. Julie Nobby, our personnel administrator, is here with 24-23, an update to the city employee handbook. Good evening, Julie.
Hello. Earlier this year, we started looking at changes to the employee handbook. We started out with a committee made up of employees, assistant chiefs, people from all departments coming up with changes maybe that they would like to see made, or changes that I have made note of over the last couple of years. We went and had several meetings with that group, and then after we got it kind of condensed down, then we formed a handbook committee made up of two council members and two board of works members, myself and Amy, and discussed some of those changes. And the red line copy that you guys should all have in your Dropbox should be a summary, or basically a handbook copy, explaining what all the changes are. I should have notes in the margins on the changes. If you would like, I'll give you a brief summary of those changes. Okay. One of the main changes we did was we added a paid parental leave policy into the handbook currently. We didn't have anything like that. This would allow people to have two weeks of paid time off for paid parental leave. Bereavement leave, we added wording in for a brother and sister-in-law, allowing them to have three days off if one of them would pass away. Unpaid leave of absence, that is something that's in our handbook, and currently the wording was in there. You had to be an employee for one year before you could take an unpaid leave of absence. We're taking out that one-year requirement. The unpaid leave of absence, the max is 90 days that you can take off, and it is approved by a committee. There was just an incident that came up that it still has to be approved by the committee. So we thought that would help us out there. Also, the wording in the unpaid leave of absence said you could have an unpaid leave of absence in your tenure of employment. So basically, only one. We changed the wording to be you could have one within 36 months. That allows them to stay on our health insurance for those 90 days, hoping that they can then get back after that period. PTO, currently there is a six-month waiting period when you are a new hire before you can take any PTO off. So we have taken out that six-month waiting period, basically meaning as soon as you earn the time, you can take the time off. In the handbook, there is a zero-to-one-year accrual rate, which is about half the accrual rate of an employee from one to five years. We are doing away with that zero-to-one-year accrual amount. So basically, as soon as you're hired on, you're going to earn the same as somebody that's been here a year. However, we are adding wording in that we would not pay out any PTO before your one-year anniversary. So if you leave after only being here nine months, we're not going to pay out any PTO. Also requiring a two-week notice if you want your PTO paid out when you leave. We also added in some wording on PTO. So currently, the max that you can be paid out when you terminate is 120 hours of PTO. If you give us a three-months notice, we're going to add another 40 hours to that. Group sick bank, one of the changes was allowing people to contribute comp time to the group sick bank instead of PTO hours. I just heard back from an attorney that reviewed the handbook, and that's something that we may be changing. I have an appointment with him on Friday to go over any changes. His schedule didn't allow for me to set up time before this meeting, but I wanted to go ahead and present this so that we can hopefully get this done by the end of the year. So I'll have more on that next month. Personal sick bank. So on your anniversary, if you have more than four weeks of PTO built up, those hours can roll over into a personal sick bank. Personal sick bank is somewhat difficult to get into. It's there for those, you know, serious conditions. You know, you've kind of gone through most of your PTO, and you're either on some extended medical leave. So typically, you had to be down to 40 hours of PTO before you could even get into your personal sick bank, or upping that to 80 hours. So if your PTO drops down to 80 hours and you're on a medical leave, then you could get into your personal sick bank. We added some wording in for the fire department on shift moves. When a firefighter goes, they're required to go from one shift to the other. This usually happens when we hire new employees, or retirements, things like that. Somebody may have always been on shift day, and now because of people leaving or being hired, they now have to move to shift C. They may not get their normal two days off, or maybe they have to work two days back-to-back. We're adding wording in that if they don't hit their 212 hours in a four-week period, we're not going to short them anytime, because it's not their choice to move to that new shift. Lateral hires, we brought that policy forward last month. I just added some wording in to refer to our lateral policy. Emergency call-in, we're trying to be consistent amongst all departments. If you are called in for an emergency situation, employees receive three hours of overtime, time and a half. Scheduled call-in would be different. That would not be a three-hour minimum. There's some other minor changes, just to correct some errors or align with our practices. We also took out the wording for he/she and changed it to they and them. And that's the quick summary. Do you have any questions?
Julie and the committee have put a lot of time and effort. And our team that has been representative of each department has been working on this for quite a long time. So thank you for all the work that you've done to get us this far. I think your request to them is to approve this on first reading, and then you will...
Yes. After I get a chance to talk to the attorney on Friday, if there's any other changes, I would then send you a revised red line copy so that you know what those changes are and present those at the next meeting.
This is intended to be implemented January 1st.
Yes.
So that's the timeline.
Second.
Motion's been made by Rodney, seconded by Daryl. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Thanks, Julie.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Zach, you've got an update to the stormwater fee schedule.
Evening, council. Ordinance 2024-24 is a stormwater fee schedule. This is updating 2004-13 erosion control permit, which was charged by the utilities office when they came in to get their tap fees. They also got charged this as a basically part of the stormwater MS4 system to allow us to review the site plans, implement any inspections, any review of the sites to make sure that no sediment is leaving the sites and getting into our stormwater system. So with the new stormwater ordinance passed, this was brought back up and has been in the process of being reviewed. Sarah, Donna, myself, and Christopher Burke have worked on it over the last few months. Before that, Zeke was involved also. So the updated fees broken out here were reviewed with other communities and assessed that way. We did clean up some of the smaller items that were on here. We had fees associated with remodels, decks, stuff like that, that really didn't involve the MS4 because of such a small footprint of disturbance. So that got taken out. And then two of the big changes were the inspection fees that are included in here, and the engineering review fees. Any major project goes to Christopher Burke at this time to get reviewed for their stormwater, to one, make sure they're designing the system adequately, to make sure they have the proper VNP's in place to handle any runoff and such. And right now, the city is ordering those costs from Burke. So this is a 100% pass-through of Burke's cost for review goes to whoever is submitting the permit. So any of Burke's outside time, we don't have any interest in it. We are just simply passing it on to the person who are turning in the permit. And then same thing with if Burke comes down and does an inspection, they have a fee associated for that. That will get passed down to the client, and those two fees will get paid prior to final service from the utility office.
What would a typical review fee be?
We have not really seen one yet. I would say Burke's probably somewhere around $150 an hour, maybe looking at 10 hours. So it can be significant. We will encourage anybody coming in to do a large project. The more involvement you have with Burke in the beginning, the easier the review process can be, the faster it is, the better it is. So it's essentially set up to where it can be an open book of everybody's on the same page, everybody's on the same team. We want to get this passed quickly and do it quickly.
Any other questions for Zach? Is there a motion to approve 24-24 on first reading?
Second.
Motion's been made by Daryl, seconded by Rodney. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to the end of the business. Jamie, you want to give us an update for work works, please?
Julie presented the updates to the handbook that we talked about tonight, and then shared with us some updates to with job descriptions as well. Then Amy presented basically an agreement for the fire book that they're creating. If you guys have not seen this, I think it's coming out later this year.
The beginning of November is when they're creating books, to receive the books.
Okay.
Fully published.
We have 200 books, and it's basically a history of the fire department. 30 of them will go basically to people that helped contribute to the book, and then the other 170 books will basically be sold at like $40 each. So basically, it was a contract on how we would sell those. That's what we talked about. Chief McNeely came, we approved the purchase of a Dodge Charger, and the purchase of six new radios, basically on some of the new radio updates that are coming to get us in line with that. Street Commissioner Mark Klostercamper came, we approved the disposal of some wooden, or some concrete barricades, and then basically donating some wooden barricades to St. Mary's, and then gave him the permission to dispose of some furniture that's over at the old street department as appropriate. And then Zach came, and basically we approved a quote for a locator and router for a stormwater system. We approved a quote from Corbin Excavating for South Broadway estimate, and then a contract for RFPs for the process of negotiating the use of the old fire station was approved as well. So it was a not-to-exceed with Veritas Group. That's it.
Mark, update from Main Street?
Short and sweet. October 18th is the last farmer's market. That will end the season.
Hard to believe it's already over. Kevin, anything from plan?
We did not have a plan meeting this month, but I want to take 30 seconds to add something. I sat through the closing meeting for the most recent audit we had, just want to let everybody know that we're extremely proud of how well this woman represents our city and the thoroughness that she and everything she had to go through to get the auditors, the items they needed, because it was not an onsite audit. So there was a lot of emailing, there was a lot of phone calls. She spent a ton of time on it, did a hell of a job representing the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Daryl Tressler, EDC?
Since Brian didn't get to speak, I thought, if he's here, maybe he'd like to give the review.
Come on up. You should have left early.
Now, our last meeting, we had Anna Mir from the Indiana Chamber Commerce come and talk about the Work on Art program. If any other companies in town have an interest in that, that helps to set up internships and apprenticeships and stuff with local schools and whatnot. It's a good program, and one we would like to help promote in our community. As far as other items covered, gave the board an update on some of the ready projects. We are getting close to reaching 65%. Actually, as of yesterday, we submitted our final invoice to reach the 65%, which would unlock the Ready 2 funds, of which Greensburg and Indicative County both have some significant projects. And we are looking for, we will be the first region to have done that in the state. We continue to perform well. We're proud of what we've accomplished, and we look forward to starting to implement a whole new slew of projects in the region through these Ready 2 funds. And then things have just been pretty busy in the office with visiting existing businesses with some BRE stuff, but also some interested businesses looking at sites here locally. So that's about all I can talk about. I mean, is it covered most?
Daryl couldn't have said it better.
Yeah, that's right.
I think you might. We do have a revolving loan fund request, which is not a common thing.
Yeah, we have an application currently being under review, Miasari funding. And actually, I just talked to her right before this. But yes, that continues to progress, and hopefully we can get another business. She has some exciting things coming from the Tempe factory, so.
Brian, any idea on the opening of the new Marshall store, on that?
All the new Marshall stores did, I did talk to the... Yeah, it's around there. I know they're going to start interviewing here sometime. If they hadn't started already, they were looking for a location to do some interviews. So I put them in contact also with Chamber Commerce to kind of help with that as well. So yeah, that's a great addition to that.
Rodney, 911 board?
We had a 911 meeting this afternoon, and I'm still trying to control myself from all the excitement that was generated. There was an update on the hiring of a new director for 911. Four persons were interviewed for a position. One has been selected to meet with the county commissioners and the mayor, and a final decision for hiring will be made by those individuals. There's a report that a software update has been made to the walkie-talkies regarding fire districts. There is a continuing discussion regarding coverage areas. This is not the first time I've heard this in a meeting. They're still working on this, but they're working to some type of resolution. The boundary lines in fire districts are being discussed so that there's no duplication of service, that if you have a call for one fire department, that the second one doesn't arrive with them, and they've got way too many people and equipment there. But also, they want to be sure that at least one fire department shows up, or one EMT shows up. So they're trying to delineate the boundary lines for each service. Anything you'd like to add, Chief? Mayor?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Vieta, solid waste?
Report from talks away days was 91.5 tons of tires, which was down from 130 tons last year. 42.9 tons of household electronics, household waste and electronics. And then the separate event that we had talked about before that was hosted over at Kova had 19,000 pounds of pesticides. So a lot of good work around the talks away days, and a lot of good use, continued conversations about what the future of that looks like. The report was that traffic flowed a lot better this year, wait times were much less. The Fall Festival Recycled Art Contest had 61 entries, which was an amazing amount. I had the opportunity along with Sean Green and the retired art teacher of Rushville to be the judges for that. And so there was a $1,500 worth of artist stipends that were given to those. They had a really, really great turnout and lots of really good work. And that's sort of the gist of that. There is the fall. Mark, do you want to give a push on leaves, yard waste, and how we would like to see that handled?
We're going to continue what we've done in the past. We're encouraging property owners to bag their leaves, mainly because we can get quite a bit accomplished. We will be running the leaf back. We ran into an issue last fall. As more people want to utilize that service, the growing list causes us to not be able to get anything completed in a timely manner. So we're good promoting the bagging the leaves if possible, and we're hoping to start that. and we're hoping to start that collection around the 15th of the month.
Perfect. Thank you. And that's all from solid waste. Daryl, redevelopment commission?
Did not have a meeting last month. Our meeting for this month is tomorrow. But I'm going to take the lead from my other brother, Daryl, and ask Zach to kind of talk about the Liberty Lake estate.
It's a very trendy night. The Liberty Lakes is obviously moving forward. If you all have seen anything out there, they are basically almost done with the front half, going around the curb. They are scheduled to slip curb tomorrow, which is great. And their goal is to be completely done with infrastructure by the end of November. We are working with them on how to get their building permits set up for their first house and look forward to everything getting, coming together and moving along quickly.
Appreciate that. If you haven't been out that way, it's really starting to take shape.
It is. Anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Okay. I just wanted to touch on, I won't make Rick come up here, maybe? The utilities are in the midst of their rate study by the 3D Financial Group. We're working towards what those look like for the end of the year. That does include a renewal of the ERA, which is the engineer's report and assessment, something like that. So HNTB is helping with that on the water side, and we are considering doing that on the wastewater side as well. But we're working through that, and so those will hopefully be considered at the November meeting. We've been running into some issues on getting the capital improvement plans all put together and laid out. And then if you've noticed, hopefully you have, our two white water towers were professionally cleaned and treated to help with the growth that is on them, so they look substantially better and also helps to protect that finish on them. And I think that was about it. Don't forget, our final public safety cookout is October 10th down on Scobie Street. We look forward to seeing anyone and everyone there and hope you can join us. It's the last one of the year, so we're hoping for better weather than the last ones we've had at the end of the year as well. Anything else?
We need to set trigger three hours.
And we told them exactly where to go to your house.
Where to go to my house. My wife likes it, so it's all good.
Full-size candy bars.
We actually have the last five years, six years.
Not king size.
Here we're doing it now.
Yes, sir.
I just want to echo, I just want to echo Robin Meyer's comments from the board of works meeting, thanking the city, the mayor's office, the police department, and the fire department for their work with the Fall Festival, but especially Mark Klosterkampfer and the street department. They were out there early Friday morning before I was there at 6:00 a.m., and they were there Sunday after I was done cleaning up. So stand commended Mr. Klosterkampfer and your crew, and to the whole city. We had record numbers. I don't really want to say how much they were, because our insurance guy will get ahold of that and raise our rates. More than last year. Record crowds, record vendors, record everything. And Tom Miller, if you're still here, your choir did a wonderful job singing with the foreign tribute on Saturday night.
That's it.
It was to you too, Mark, for coordinating that.
Well, it's Robin's president, so I give him all the credit.
It's a big committee. It does a lot of work.
Martin, thank you for your efforts.
I appreciate it. We're working on next year already, so. Tom, you got anything?
Tom, do you want to, you got any updates or anything you want to share? You're good.
I'm good.
You're good, perfect. Okay. Anything else? If not, take a motion to adjourn. Motion's been made by Daryl. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Those opposed? Thanks, everybody.